Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 2 regular meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that all members are present and that the meeting is called to order. And I'd like to start out this evening by noting that we have a different face sitting on the left end of the table. This is Mr. Joe Ingraffia, who's our most recently appointed commissioner, and we certainly welcome him, and we'll try not to disappoint you too much. And I'd also like to take a moment just to thank Catherine Sorensen for her service. Catherine was not able to reapply this year due to some personal issues, and we certainly wish her well, and we will miss her and appreciate her time that she has spent with us. So as usual, we will open our meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you would rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, excellent. This is a time that is set aside for planning commissioner announcements. Do we have any sparkling news to impart this evening?
Tomorrow, the Ocean Protection Council is meeting in Sacramento and is discussing Prop 1 funding, so some of us are going to Sacramento tomorrow for that.
Wow. Excellent. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our annual fun activity, which is election of the chairman and vice chairperson for the coming year. So let's, we'll start out with the chairperson. Are there any nominations, or volunteers even better?
I move to nominate Dr. Teuf. I'll second that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other, are there any other nominations, or anyone who'd like to step forward? No? So seeing none, all those in favor of electing me as chairman for the next year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one abstention. And we'll move on to the task of vice chairperson, and I will warn the vice, whoever is elected to this post, that I do have to recuse myself on the public hearing this evening, so you're going to be jumping right in there.
I nominate Commissioner Luer, vice chair.
I'll second that. So we have a nomination, and a second. Do we have any other nominations, any other, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes four zero, I assume with one extension, I didn't hear. Okay, very good. So you're stuck with us for another year. Moving on to one of the better parts of the evening, which is public comment, this is a time when we would like to hear from members of the public, so anyone who would like to speak on matters that are not on tonight's agenda, please come forward. We'd love to hear from you.
This is just my last attempt. I have a cat who's missing.
Jamie, I'm sorry, would you give us your name for the record?
Oh, yeah.
I forgot to mention that.
That's okay. Jamie Brunson. And I have a cat who's missing. It's my last attempt to just put it out there for people. I have a picture of him, gray and white tabby cat. Also has our phone number. My husband and I has our phone number on it. He went missing a while ago, but we believe that he, if he's going to be somewhere, it would be up around either from like the movie theater over towards the golf course and up towards Black Hill or Main Street, kind of in that area. We, you know, we've lived here for five years. We know about the predators and everything that's out there. He's used to being outside, so we do believe he's alive and possibly living with somebody. So I'm hoping that putting this out there on for people to see, it might be something to come of it. So I think that's about it. We're hoping for a miracle story. Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know about the television at home, but the phone numbers are a little hard to read from here. You want to just give them orally?
Yeah. My cell phone number is 441-0259, and my husband's is 459-3877.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening?
What's your cat's name?
His name is Bevo. It's B as in boy, E, B-O.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll close the public comment session, bring it back to council for the consent calendar, which this evening consists of the current advanced planning list and the minutes from the planning commission meeting of December 15th. Are there any comments, anyone?
I'd just like to comment on one item on the current project list. Just one, on, let's see, it's 379 Orton Street. There's a new mobile home that's going in, and it's going to be noticed for the local, within the 500 feet, but if, it's on administrative review and will not be brought before the planning commission. So we're going to be discussing the mobile, the mobile home requirements at a later date, but I would just want the public to know that anybody interested in this, the only way to affect it is to file an appeal on the, on the building permit. So I just wanted to bring that up for the general public that would not be noticed in the immediate area. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, corrections to the minutes, poems, songs? Okay, with seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar submitted?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. So we will now proceed to Section B. Our only public hearing of this evening is a continued public hearing on case number UP 0-433 at 430 Olive Street in Morro Bay, California. And being as I live within the 500-foot circle, I will recuse myself and turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Luer at this point.
Well, thank you very much. As was mentioned, this is case number UPO-433 at 430 Olive Street, and at this point, do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Luer, and congratulations and welcome, Commissioner Ingraffia. The item before you this evening, as was spoken, is a request for conditional use permit approval at 430 Olive Street. This matter has been continued from the January 5, 2016, meeting, when the applicant was directed to submit revised plans to include additional 3D renderings that more clearly illustrate the visual impact of the proposed addition as seen from ground level. The proposed project is located within the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district, and the project requires conditional use permit approval due to the existing non-conforming front setback. And it's important to note that all proposed development has been designed to conform with the requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance. You can see the existing non-conforming garage outlined in purple, the proposed addition outlined in green, and the 20-foot front setback is that red line there. Let's see. These are the photo simulations that were submitted by the applicant. They show the existing and proposed residential structure. So the existing is on the left, and the proposed is on the right. And there's one from the other side, and one looking straight on from ground level. And it's staff's recommendation that the planning commission adopt Resolution 0516, thereby approving conditional use permit number UP 0433. And thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions for staff?
Joan, did you receive any comments from the neighbors at all? I didn't see anything come through.
No, sir.
Richard?
I had one question, and it's more for my education. It probably has something to do with custom and usage. Yeah, I noticed the balcony is one of those cantilevered effects that where there are no structures going down to the ground. Is it typical in this community that, if there is some examples, where you get to put a balcony over a sizable structure that really is sort of invading in a sizable way the setback? Because in fact, there's, there is no setback under this balcony.
Yes, sir. Let me go back here.
Unless I totally misread it, which could be, yeah.
No, you're good. The balcony does encroach into the setback, but you are allowed to encroach up to five feet into the front setback, as long as you don't set posts, as long as it's cantilevered out.
Right, well, I understand that. I guess what I, and I'm not going to belabor this at all.
No, it's, please.
It has to, let's see. You look to the setback, which is presumably to keep yard space in the front open and kind of uniformity to the neighborhood in terms of the look of the front street. And I was looking at the balcony cantilever thing as kind of an exception to a setback rule, if you will.
Yes, sir.
So I guess my question is, do you really apply the exception when the rule itself is sort of obliterated because, because the setback wasn't observed? There was a structure that was built there long before the setback rules were in place and all that.
Well, you have a couple of things going on in this particular instance. One, you have other structure that's below it. It's existing already out in a setback. But then you have the policy which allows decks to be cantilevered and do a setback. It allows visual interest. It breaks up flat facades that you would otherwise have. So there are reasons to do it from an architectural standpoint, and then from a functionality standpoint, you know, to have an area that's available to, you know, to use outside, right? So, I mean, that's, that's the idea behind the code, allowing those types of things to encroach into setbacks, but not have support posts on the ground, because when you have them on the ground, that brings that encroachment all the way down to the ground.
Right.
And so then changes that plane from what is really back at the face of the building, even if you have something that kind of pops out into it. If you have the posts out front in the setback, that kind of brings that plane out to the front of the deck, potentially.
Well, the only, the only thing I was sort of muddling in my mind, or as my wife says, ruminating, was if you, if you, if the balcony was pushed back beyond the setback, it would provide a little niche in the side of the building, and that might also be an additional interest to the building. That's the only thing I was thinking. I might not be doing a good job of explaining myself, but I've just thought about that.
Okay, well, I think this is starting to get into comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
No, no problem. This was just time for questions. And then, so at this point, we'll open it for public comment. Typically, we have the applicant come first, and is there, do you have a presentation?
Please come to the podium, state your name.
My name is Jerry Craft, and my wife Carolyn, we're the owners. We've submitted plans, we made some modifications of plans, so I'm really here just to answer any questions you may have regarding this proposed addition.
Okay, great. If you'll step back, and we'll, we'll have other public comment, we'll, if there's any questions, we'll have you come forward again. Is there any other public comment on this, this item? Seeing none, are there any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Craft, you want to come back up? Did staff share with you our design guidelines when you brought this in?
Yes.
Okay. And do you understand the nature of the way we're trying to avoid continuous facades and, you know, moving the, the basic massing of the building around a little bit to kind of decrease its apparent?
Well, in actuality, I had my architect, Jeremy Stevens, he actually met with the city to discuss this, you know, and we're trying to do as much as we can with our property.
Yeah.
Because of the elevation change, there are some limitations.
Yeah. And did you, did you talk it over with your neighbors? Are they aware what you're trying to do?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close, close public comment at this point, and bring it back to the commission for, for comments and further, further discussion. Michael, seems like you're up first.
Yeah, well, I think, you know.
Sorry, Commissioner Ingraffia, I think, had a, had a good point. I mean, when I first looked at it, I was really concerned about how far we're building out the box, especially given how deep the neighbors' house is set back from the street. So we have, we have somebody whose the garage is already non-conforming, and then at the building line, we're filling out the kind of box. And so that's a general concern to me, but, but the neighbor hasn't chosen to speak to this. And, you know, I do think we have a tendency to have smaller projects come in that I think pull off kind of amazing things. And generally speaking, if, if this was a strategy for massing that was on a larger project, I wouldn't be in favor of it, you know. But I, I appreciate that you went back and had the, the renderings done from this level, because I think things like the balcony and the little articulation at the roof, and the fact that it is set back away from the garage, I'm 51% in favor of it. I do think, though, that this is a, this is a dangerous strategy, though, because I think we've found so many people, especially when we get into the higher elevations in town and some of the steeper hills, that if we, if we have a very large house, and you've got a courtyard still behind here, I think, so the massing doesn't go deep into the lot on the side, and I think that's another major point. But I think it's a, I think it's an interesting facade, and the strip that's down below, the new addition up above, renders a little differently from the street, if I'm not mistaken. And so you don't get a monolithic kind of massing. It is broken up by the balcony and the, the nature of the rendering on the second level of the structure. So I'm in favor, but I'm just, as a caution to staff, I'm terrified when I see the, the box build out, because I think especially as you come up the hill, it's going to be an interesting facade. But I think because you see back and can see the break in the depth of the house, that it's going to keep it from seeming overwhelmingly large, but, and that's going to be a great deck out there for 4th of July and other, other events.
Richard, any comments?
Maybe more to staff, kind of following up what Joe was saying. On the deck, so you could, you can move, my understanding is you could, you don't need any kind of conditional use or anything. You can have a cantilever out. When you guys look at that, do you kind of make sure that, from privacy issues for like neighbor, neighbors, you know what I mean? When you start doing that kind of stuff, like, I'm not saying that that's happening here, because I went, I went to that place, and it appears not to be the case here. However, just as a mindset, you know?
I mean, we look at all aspects of the projects. I mean, one of the things I constantly tell the planners when they, is to, you can't just look at plans. You have to go out to the site and look around. And don't just take the plans and look around, look at the lot, look at the, you know, look at the plans, look at the lot, look at the plans, look at the lot. You have to look outside. That's probably the most important thing that you look at, is kind of how it fits into the neighborhood. What is it, what is it looking like there? What are the, you know, it's got windows on this side. What are those windows facing? You know, are they, are they facing the house next door to you? Are they looking right in the living room? What is that, what is that looking at next door? What is it looking at behind you? What are those, what are those windows in the back, you know, facing? What are the windows on the other side facing? So I always, you know, always encourage them to look at all of those aspects of it, because basically how the new structure or the addition interacts with the environment around it. I mean, that's what the planning commission, you know, doing here every night when we bring projects before you. That's usually the point of angst, right? It's, this isn't really fitting in to the neighborhood because of X or Y or Z, you know, those are typically the points of contention. And so it's something that we pay a lot of attention to. And so, going back to your question, do we look at it related to decks? Yes. Obviously, I don't think in this case that's the issue, because you have a great big deck below it, you know, and the deck that we're talking about is for the area where the addition is on that sort of second floor area, and it's over the lower, the deck that's below it. So that's not going to encroach onto anybody, really. So, yeah, I mean, we do look at it, and we do pay attention to it, and what impacts those, that might have. And then obviously, for, for most projects, when you're talking about additions of second stories and things like that, you're in a, in a scenario where you're getting either an administrative permit or, or one that's discretionary going to be for the planning commission, so they both get noticed. And so the neighbors get the opportunity to come in, and they regularly do. And now we post all those properties with the big yellow signs, and everybody sees them. And so it's, it's, it's much fewer and far between that we get folks that come in and say we didn't know. So we increased that radius, we put the big yellow signs out. Everybody's used to seeing those now a little bit, since we've been using them for a while, and it's been really positive.
Yeah, I'm encouraged that you encourage your staff to do that, and I'm sure that for public's sake, you know, mentioning it. And regarding this, this project, I, I thank you, sir, for making it easier to digest what's, what the addition is and how it's going to interface with the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Joe?
Well, my, my previous comment at the wrong time notwithstanding, I really, I don't find anything wrong with the balcony at all. I was just more curious about, again, what was custom and usage, and was this a kind of an exceptional request? And I'm gathering it really isn't, so.
Pretty standard, pretty right of the mill.
Yeah, again, the unusual aspect being that there was already this big hunking structure below it, but I understand it isn't, so I have no problem with it.
Well, I have some similar concerns to what Commissioner Lucas brought forward. It's, as far as my comments last time, completing the box is, is something that we're trying to get away from here by, by allowing a lot more articulation and interest in, in the, you know, in the, in the structures, especially in additions to existing structures. This is a, this house is an exception, though, because, because of the siding and also because of the neighborhood, it sits on a, there's, it's a very eclectic neighborhood from, from the elevation changes and the steep lots. And, you know, essentially, I really like this structure, you know, the butterfly roof and the mid-century modern bones of the house. It has a lot going for it, and, and it fits right into that eclectic neighborhood, eclectic nature of the neighborhood. There's several facets of the structure that keep it from becoming a, becoming a box. And I think that plays well into this, you know, this design, but I would, you know, caution, and this, this wouldn't work on very many other structures, you know. I think we would, we would find more commissioners opposed to it. And so, so with that, I don't have, I don't have a problem, and I appreciate the applicant doing the further photo renderings to, to help the rest of the commission understand what the project is. So we've had, we've had discussion, we've had questions. Do we have a motion?
We have a, piece A on here, Exhibit A, that has a different, that has a different resolution than the project number. So I would, I would move that we approve UPO 433 and adopt Exhibit A, Resolution 0516.
Resolution numbers on the, in the recommendation are 0516. Exhibit A is 0516.
Okay.
Use permit number is 433 on, in, in both.
Okay.
I mean, maybe I could be missing, I may be missing something.
I was just looking at the first page, where it said conditional use permit, UPO 433.
Conditional use permit 433.
Yeah, that's at the top of the staff report.
And that's in the, that's on Exhibit A.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The first paragraph there, the subtitle there. So I think we got our ducks in a row.
I think we did.
So.
So I'll move we adopt Resolution PC 05-16.
There we go.
Do we have a second?
That'll work.
I'll see you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Luer.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, at this point, we'll welcome back our fearless leader to consume.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Good work. So we'll move on to item number C, which is new business, a discussion of city water, a city annual water equivalency unit program. And I believe we have bumped in the road here.
Yeah, I had placed this on the agenda last week before the release of the, of the agenda packet, thinking that I would have time on Thursday and Friday to put together a staff report for this, but I ended up being sick, and hence the reason I wasn't there the other evening, so, and wasn't able to put it together. But it's the Water Equivalency Unit Report, and what that does is takes a look, each year we have to issue a water equivalency units for new development. Regularly, we never reach the number that we actually identify to issue. We never usually get very close, and again, same thing this year. But I'll be bringing it back at the next meeting, so that would be on the, on the 16th. And I apologize for putting it on here and not having the report ready, but sort of beyond my control. But we will have it for the next meeting, and you'll be making a, you know, recommendation on to city council for that, and then we'll be following on in the, to council for the second meeting in February.
Those viruses always have their way.
Good. Could I ask a question, seeing as this is an agenda item? Are we looking to make comment on alterations of the regulation, or are we just looking to receive a report?
So we were, I probably said this last year when I brought this to you, that we were going to change the timing of it because it tells us we're going to have it done by the first of the year, but the water information isn't ready till right now in February. So that kind of makes it impossible to comply with the code. So we were going, we were supposed to have amended the code by now to fix that. So you will be seeing a code rendition coming through where we do make recommendations for change, and you'll see that. But we're not proposing any changes to the policy at this point, just continue with the policy as it is with the two-for-one offsets and then identifying a number of water equivalency units and bringing that forward and then making the recommendation to council for it.
Great, thank you, Chair.
Scott, I don't want to get into it too much, but I always had a, like, these water equivalency units, I always kind of had a little problem with them because they use these like for, for instance, for when they estimate sewer capacity or sewer flows. Now, I'm more of a, like, put a flow meter on it, and then you don't have to worry about equivalency, you know? Is this something that is laced together with some of the data, for instance? The data that you get from these water equivalency units, do you have hard data, like from meters that you, that you could actually correlate how well your equivalency units are working? You know, when, because you know what I'm saying? You're using data, like an equivalency unit data.
It's a lot, it's the amount of water that's used by a single-family home.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it's based on.
Right.
I mean, so they, we, the city, you know, monitors that over time and has data going back many years for that. I mean, we've had the water equivalency unit program in place for years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, all of the information, we do the regular water reports, it talks about all the water that we use, the number of water equivalency units that we issue, which is basically new homes. And we have all of that data, and it was based on, I mean, and they did original studies, they came up with, you know, how much water is utilized by, you know, a single-family home, and that's, I think, updated over time.
Okay.
It's usually, I mean, so it's been reduced over time, right? Because we've been in a drought, and so we've been putting in more measures to reduce water usage, and so those numbers have been tailing off over time because you've been successful at it, I guess, if you want to say that, it's conserving water in the city.
Yeah, but then it's mitigated, so you can make more, build more then, too, based on that data.
Well, theoretically, right? If you're, if you come and you're able to get a water equivalency unit, you're offsetting that water usage to one, so you're actually bringing water to the city, if that makes sense. Or the thing does now allow, there's an LOFE that goes into our water conservation program. So it's either of those two things, and we get people to do both. I mean, I regularly, I mean, we have, you know, we're pretty successful, we have a lot of folks that take advantage of our retrofit programs that we have just ongoing, you know, that replace, when they replace toilets and purchase water-efficient washing machines. Those, I sign off on, I sign those things probably on a weekly basis on rebates for those that are offered out of our conservation programs. And so the city's been really, I think, really successful in this, and it's, our citizens are very much into it. Like I said, there's usually, any week it can go from five or six of those things to one or two, but there's rarely a week that goes by that I don't have at least, you know, one or two of them in my inbox for signature, so. Thank you.
Just one question. I was trying to do some readings, trying to figure out what actually a water equivalency was before I just called in to ask. And so I'm not sure where I came across it, but there's a population limitation in Morro Bay of something like 12,500.
There is?
Is anyone contemplating changing that provision?
It was put in through a vote, I don't know that it's actually enforceable.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, we get to that number, and then what do we do?
Yeah.
I don't want to go there, I don't really know what that means, I'm not really sure how that works, but, yeah, I don't know that that's an enforceable thing.
Yeah.
But I think from a planning standpoint at this point, we plan to that to some extent, but we also have to plan beyond it because it's probably not something that's really enforceable. Getting into areas that involve attorneys and things, and so I'm not going to pretend to be one, but I really, again, I don't really, I'm not exactly sure how that's an enforceable thing, sort of question, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking it isn't. I guess my thought was, gee, we really should replace that with something that strikes people a little more reasonably.
Put in by the vote of the people, it can only be replaced by a vote of the people.
Ah, I see. Okay.
And the current, the city's current growth rate will reach that sometime around 3067, I think.
Yeah, the city's not growing. I mean, we don't, we don't have a growth rate at this point, I don't think.
The strategy will be, will involve sending some of our citizens off to Mars, I think. Yeah. Okay, well, this is, this is an item on our agenda, it's not a public hearing item, but I will ask if there are any members of the public that would like to speak to this issue. We'd certainly welcome hearing from you if that's the case. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Do we need a, do we need a motion to continue this to the next meeting, or?
You don't need to, I mean, I just, it's really informational, I'll bring it back, I'll have something for you, you'll be able to make a decision.
Very good.
So, hopefully.
Very good. So we have no unfinished business, we will move on to planning commissioner comments. Any ideas to?
I guess, Scott, I don't know if it's appropriate for the issue we just discussed, but at some point, when we're, when we're making judgments on water usage on a house, do we, where does, where does some kind of gray water, hybrid gray water system come in? Do we ever credit people because they're cutting down on the volume of water per fixture?
It's not part of our green building incentive program currently. One of our goals for next year is to look at our green building incentive program and look at ways to add things to it. That's probably not a bad thing to add. Probably going to do it, I mean, I've, we had them as three separate goals going for the next goal cycle, this and solar, and then looking at the green building incentive We've consolidated them all into one. Some of the things that might be, may be solved by the upcoming building code cycle. The new building codes will be released in June, and then we'll be adopting them in December. But as part of that review process, we'll get to see whether the gray water component of that is still an addendum or whether it's part of the actual code. There's been some discussion about it, making it part of the code versus having it a separate piece. So we'll see what comes out of that, and then, and so once we have a look at that, we'll be able to inform where we go with, from there, and then, and then take a look at how we incentivize folks to come forward with that. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the idea, and that's one of the council's goals, so.
Would a gray water system not qualify partway or all the way towards meeting that two-to-one reduction in water use? Would that be one of the tools that would be available?
It could be, and it would be if people wanted to go down that road, yes. No one's come forward and asked us about it, but, yeah, certainly that would be a way to do it. It's something I've, we had at least brief conversations with the Public Works Director, Rob Leibig.
Maybe just on that thought, might lace in the fact that by having that gray water, you're reducing the amount of flow into a wastewater treatment facility as well that could be credited.
Double benefit, yes.
Yeah. I have a, we had a WRFCAC meeting right before this, and I didn't know this, but we, the, you know, initially, we've been focusing on the Rancho Colina site for the WRF, and now the city, the city council had signed a memorandum of understanding to purchase, possibly purchase the Rigetti site, so now they're looking at a different site again.
That's correct.
With that, and.
We're still looking at both.
You're still looking at both, but we're looking at that. And one of the things that I find interesting is that the city is, city council is also working with the harbor department to address the dredge spoils, and so that is something that we didn't talk about the WRFCAC meeting, but this piece of property that we're, that they're buying is quite large. So I think just a shout out to the people that are following that, you might want to follow up on some of the harbor meetings and then those discussions, and then get a little bit more information on how that's being integrated because the issue of dredge spoils, especially, we talked about when it comes to the State Parks Marina back there, there's some issues about not being able to dump out there, but having a place to dump that. So just to hedge up for that, for people that are following that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to mention, I don't know if most of you've had a chance to read through the Western Cities magazine that we get in our box every month, but there is an article in this month's Western City, the zoning ordinance will be coming back to us one of these days, and there's a, I was looking at it recently and, you know.
The sign ordinance.
I'm sorry, the signing ordinance, sign ordinance, thank you. I don't know, I was even looking in my computer for that folder, and I was looking under Z's today for some reason, I don't know. But, you know, I've been looking at it a little bit because, you know, it's been raining. And there's an article in there on the recent Reed versus Town of Gilroy, Oregon, decision, which is going to have a huge impact on some of the provisions in the sign ordinance when we get it back, I think. So it's well worth looking at, and if anyone that's watching us would like to look at it, you can just go to Western Cities magazine online and get the article for free. So that's out there also. If there are no more comments from the commission, we'll move on to Scott, community developer manager comments.
The only comment that I have this evening is to remind you all that we have the Coastal Commission in town next week. That'll be February 10th through the 12th. Should be a pretty interesting meeting, I think, particularly Wednesday, when they take up the review of the head of the Coastal Commission, Charles Lester. So that should be an interesting conversation, I'm sure one that'll garner much attention. And then we also have the, I think the Toro Lane project is also on the agenda for that evening with a no substantial issue finding, in case you were interested. So with that, that's about all I have.
Right. And the staff report for that project is also available online at the Coastal Commission website now.
Yeah.
For those of you who are short on reading material and long on patience.
Also, the night before, my friend Mark Taglascini told me that he's going to be making some food for people for the meet and greet, and it's going to be at 6 o'clock, I think.
At the Inn at Morro Bay.
At the Inn at Morro Bay, yeah.
That's correct.
Hmm, that could be an interesting meet and greet. Okay. Well, with that, if there's no further business before the commission tonight, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be here in the Veterans Building on February 16th at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.